Very good. I got the thumbs up, so I'm gonna go ahead and open up the city council regular meeting agenda, or a regular meeting. This is City of Granbury. We are at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And I believe it's about 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. We're now called to order, and if I could, I'd like to invite Mr. Richard Hae to give us the invocation, then we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray with me, please. Most wonderful heavenly Father, we're grateful for all the blessings that you've given us, among which is this great city that we live in, in a great state, in a wonderful country, where we understand your wisdom, and your compassion, and your love. Father, we're grateful for these elected officials and the time they spend guiding our community and leading it. We pray your wisdom will be upon them, that their decisions they make will be for the betterment of everyone in this community. We pray, Father, that their discussions will show your spirit of compassion and love. And, Father, we pray your blessings will continue upon us all. In the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Hae. Now, do I mean to pledge allegiance to the United States flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Now, the great state of Texas?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Proclamation and presentations, number 4.1, City Council, City Manager issue encouraging statements and recognize city staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I wanted to highlight a couple of issues that came up. Last week, while I was out of town, we had two rather large leaks during the very cold weather. We had two different crews involved in both of these leaks, and they all worked together on them through the night, from about 5:00 PM all the way to 9:00 AM on two of them. And so, it was a pretty big deal. We had a fire on the east side of town, outside the city limits, and the water leak was caused from hammerhead of the fire hydrant, where the firefighters were needing to get water. And so, we, that was over on Liberty Drive, and we had another issue on Lakeland Street. So, the guys worked through the night on both of those, two different nights, two different episodes. I want to name some of their names. Dawson Bowling, Nick Worther, Brian Walker, Juan Ricardo, and Ricky Snyder. Those guys put in the extra effort and really delivered the mail for the city, kept our water system going, and can't thank them enough for their overachievement in extremely cold conditions. Y'all may remember, the wind was blowing, sub-freezing temperatures, and they were dealing with water. So, they got it fixed and got the problem resolved. And the firefighters were successful in getting the fire put out. So, rather big fire with all kinds of chemicals burning, and what I was told, I hadn't seen a report on that yet, but I do know that it was a big deal. And so, thank you to the firefighters. Thank you to our water and wastewater crews for working together and resolving those leaks and keeping our system up and running. And also, would like to congratulate Captain Timothy Holloman, or Tim Holloman, of the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department. As you may have seen in the newspaper, he earned his Master Firefighter Certification, and this represents the elite of the fire service. Out of approximately 34,000 Texas firefighters, less than 550 have achieved this certification. This is pretty amazing. Currently, the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department has five master firefighters, so Tim has joined that group. Tim has served Granbury and surrounding communities for 13 years. In addition to his service with Granbury Volunteer Fire Department, he serves on the city's Planning and Zoning Commission, and demonstrating his ongoing commitment to improving Granbury. Master firefighter certification is awarded by the State Firefighters and Fire Marshal Association of Texas. Achieving this distinction requires at least 10 years of service, firefighter number two certification, and 400-plus hours of advanced training across multiple categories. So, I'd like to, I don't see him here, I didn't think he knew, I was gonna even say this about him tonight, but we'd like to thank him for his dedication to our community, and let's give him a round of applause, even though he's not here. Thank y'all. Obviously, we've got a great team, and just every opportunity we get, we like to brag on them. So, thank you for allowing us to put this on the agenda. And that concludes my report, sir.
Counsel? Yes? Here? Okay. I'll just remind Counsel that this proclamation presentation for our city employees came as a result of the request that Ms. Trish Reiner made about three and a half years ago, and it's been on the, every agenda since, it's gonna be on every agenda too. It's the right, it's the right thing to do. We get an opportunity to do that, and I want to say thank you to all the city staff, thank you to city manager here. And I got feedback this week, I was out of town, and I was interfacing with a Fredericksburg policeman, young policeman, I'm not gonna say why we were interfacing. And he was saying all of the good things about Fredericksburg, or about Granbury, Granbury Police Chief, and the staff here. He has done training in Granbury, and he'll be back. He has my card and my address, obviously. So, I don't have any more.
And your notice to appear?
I say he's a very nice policeman. Very nice. There's only eight over. So, now, I'm gonna move right on to no one else. I'm gonna move right on to five public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items, and I only have, I do not have anything there, so I'm gonna go right on to the consent agenda, which we only have one item, and it's the meeting minutes from January 21st. Does anybody wanna pull that off and have any response on it? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Wadlin?
Second.
Mr. Overdier? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass 6-0. Thank you. Now, we'll move to the deliberation agenda, and on the public hearings, I will call the individuals that have signed up to speak after the staff has made their presentation. And I have no one to speak here, so I'm gonna go right to 7.1, which is a public hearing, and we will consider adopting ordinance number 25-06, approving the request of Kelly Clark for a specific use permit for an amusement center, commercial, outdoor, temporary, and light commercial zoning. The consideration and motion of the specific use permit by city council also provides for procedural compliance for outdoor events with animals on the city beach, per the Park Regulation Section 1.04.002.F.2 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinances. Property is located at 615 East Pearl Street, that's our city beach. So, Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. Y'all may recall, this is an annual event that we've been hosting, Bulls on the Beach. In order to facilitate that, we have the need to go through the specific use permit process in which Mr. Clark has done. Mr. Clark can't be with us tonight, he's got a family emergency, but we will carry on without him, y'all. I believe all y'all know him already from the past, and so, as we get to the end, I wanna turn it over to our planning director, Kara Wawie. As we get to the end, and the request, or the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission is a little bit outside of our bounds of authority, so we'll talk about that a little bit before we make a motion, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Wawie.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. So, our first slide is the site location map. The city beach is there, outlined in teal, and that is where the event would occur. As previously stated, a public hearing for the SUP is a requirement. This event has been ongoing every year for over four years, and so, this is a pretty routine presentation, the site zone light commercial within which the SUP is required. This slide shows the general layout of the activity. You can see this is the beach, the large circle on this slide is the splash pad, the brown roof to the left of that is a pergola, and the little squiggly boxes there represent bleachers where the audience would be seated. Interior to that is where the bull riding activity would occur. The zoning ordinance has a specific use permit review requirements to serve as a test of the proposal, and the proposal meets all of these requirements in a favorable way. While there are surrounding residential areas, as well as commercial and convention activities, the use has performed over the past years very successfully, and does not present anything that's not harmonious. We do find it is harmonious and compatible in character. It is temporary and not, does not take up much time. The application description is consistent with amusement center, commercial, outdoor, temporary. The proposed use and activity is characterized as reasonable in the location, and the use does not appear to have any impacts on the surrounding area. And these are additional regulations and requirements that we review in an SUP. Some of these do repeat what we just went through, that is being harmonious with the area. In addition, item number three, there's no new infrastructure needed for this activity, so that's in place. Conditions may be imposed, we do propose conditions, you'll see those here in a second. And the remainder of these requirements are standard, such as conforming with a period of time, conforming with conditions that the owner needs to agree to, and then there are others of these that speak to the zoning ordinance and the city code that the applicant and its activities associated with the request would need to perform to. And all of that is in your staff report. We did send notice out to nine property owners within 200 feet of the property, and we also published the notice in the newspaper. We received one letter in support, and nothing was received in opposition to the request. Staff is recommending approval of the request for the term as requested between the setup of March 6th and the takedown of March 19th of this year. Additionally, a condition that the use be conducted in accordance with the event and festival ordinance. The request also requires the council to review the park gatherings with insurance coverage. I think Chris alluded to that, that will be discussed. The planning and zoning recommendation with a vote of 6-0 is subject to the conditions recommended by staff, and an additional condition to increase the insurance for the event from $2 million to $10 million. Your voting options are on this screen. You do need a three-quarter vote to approve, since the city code requires signatures from neighbors within 300 feet of residential zone property, and 500 feet for a public address system. And signatures were not acquired by the applicant, the applicant has the duty to acquire those. Additionally, the city code has a requirement precluding animals on the city beach, of course, bulls are animals, so this request would need approval to allow those animals on the beach. That's that slide. That concludes my presentation. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I might just add that the, can you go back to the planning zoning recommendation? There you go.
Yep.
I believe it was Mr. Moore, he used to be in the insurance business, called me before this meeting and talked to me about this liability being $2 million, he didn't feel that was enough, and maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but I told him that, you know, we're not able to require somebody to do more than what's in our city code that's adopted, and feel free to ask the gentleman if he'd be willing to do more, and that number ended up at $10 million. Mr. Clark has stated that that's unattainable financially, and I haven't been able to follow up with him due to personal situation going on in my world, but I would recommend that you go with our current regulations, as we've done in the past, and if we want to change our permit and require more insurance for this or all events in the future, we need to probably do ordinance and amend that at some future date, if you want to implement that higher level of liability insurance. So...
In the future?
Yeah. City manager's recommending the approval, subject to the $2 million because of the, that's what our current code requires, and asking him to do more as a contingent is probably not in the best interest of the city, if I was looking at the city attorney. Now then, additional risk insurance is always advisable, but not at the cost of violating our own ordinance, so. And then, obviously, we've done this in the past, and we have no problem with the Bulls on the Beach. The company always notifies and works with the BRA, and takes care of any kind of problem that they would be concerned about. Is someone here from, there we go, I didn't know Mr. Clark sent somebody. Do you want to come up and answer any questions, in case they have some? What is your name? If you'll get the microphone and turn it on, there's a little red button there, or some kind of button, there you go.
Hello, my name is Kai Clark. My father wanted me to inform y'all, it was very last minute that he informed me about it, but my sister is, just her water broke this morning there in Denton, and he's up there dealing with the...
That's a good family reason.
For any baby, yes, sir. So, it was a...
Good family emergency.
Change of plans, and so, I was informed to come be here, so, but yes, I'm here to answer any questions you'd like.
Do you know if he looked into what it cost to buy $10 million of insurance instead of the $2 million?
Yes, sir, I do. What we were informed from our insurance company that we've been with for over 10 years, they do over 200 events like ours a year, and we currently have the most that they provide. For us to get up to that level would require about $8,000 more than what we currently pay, and that just becomes unfeasible for us, just for the one event for us to do here. So, we have looked into that from our current company that we've had a longstanding relationship with.
Sure.
You guys carry $2 million, correct? That's what you had last year?
Yes, sir. Years ago, we were at $1 million, and we upped it on our own, we upped it to $2 million.
Right.
Yes, sir. We have the maximum that our company, that they provide for.
And you're prepared to do the $2 million again this year?
Yes, sir.
And just so you guys have a little bit of perspective, kinda outside the box, Tammy and I had a conversation about this, and she reached out to some folks, and the Houston livestock, and huge, right, $10 million. To give you an idea of what we're looking at here versus what planning and zoning is suggesting, we raised that too. It's outside of the realm of our ordinances, and so, your attorney is advising you to go with the $2 million.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I would like to see some comparison. I mean, we're a small town, we have small events. I think going to $10 million may be something that may not be feasible for a lot of the events that we have, just for the simple fact that that's not something that a normal mom and pop would carry that type of insurance. Even for them to go from $1 million to $2 million on their own just shows what type of dedication he has in order to provide us with the events that they provide here. And to be honest, Kelly Clark has done an outstanding job with all the events, and every time he comes, it's, when he leaves, it's all nice and pretty, like it was never there. I mean...
Better than we found it. That's what we tried to do.
It's amazing.
Yes, sir.
So, I just wanna say that, I know he's normally here, and I was hoping to see him, but thank y'all for the things that y'all do and the entertainment y'all provide.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Kara, could you please put up the two options that we have? Or actually, sounds like one option, or deny, but approve the SUP as presented, and it's being presented with $2 million in insurance.
Right.
Correct. Okay. Okay.
Mayor, I had the same, I had the same question. I mean, she also, Kara also added the additions, or the conditions, she's presented the conditions, am I correct? So, that's where I'm kinda confused. Are we approving the SUP as she presented with the conditions? So, it's basically saying the same thing twice. Is that what you're doing?
Right. So, there's staff recommendation with the conditions that staff recommended, so I can go over those for you very quickly. SUP, the length, the term, right, and the event to be conducted in accordance with the events ordinance of the city code.
So, those are the conditions.
We're good.
The second part of that would be if you had additional conditions you wanted to add.
If you wanted to add that $10 million on here, this would be the time to add it, but the way it's presented is under our code. Either way, you go about it, you need three-fourths vote to do what y'all wanna do, so if there's a problem with this, I'd say speak up, so we'd get an idea where we're at.
Just making sure that we all are on the same page, voting for the same thing. Okay. So, we could approve this with, we can approve this as presented, and expect that we will have $2 million in insurance and the other conditions that the P and Z outline that Kara has given us. Okay? Other discussion? More?
I think we need another vote to approve the use of the animals, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing. We have, we have you already speaking, so...
Yes, sir.
If there's other things that you'd like to comment on? No?
No, sir.
Anyone else want to sign up quickly? No? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing then. Other conversations? Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Corgan makes the motion?
Second.
It's seconded. Discussion then? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass 6-0. And now, we need another motion. And that motion...
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the animals on the city beach per Section 104.002, Alpha Point 2, the city code of Granbury of ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corgan. Okay. No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The animals pass 6-0 as well. Thank you. Okay. We'll go to 7.2. This too is a public hearing. We'll consider adopting ordinance number 2507, approving the request of Mary Franco for a specific use permit to allow for an accessory dwelling unit in the planned development with a base of S4 dash, or SF-4 zoning located at 324 Sardius Boulevard. Mr. Kaufman?
I'll turn this over to our planning director as well.
Thank you. So, this is our site location map. The property in question with the request for the SUP is outlined in teal, it's rather in the center of the map, so surrounded by single-family residential dwellings. The site zoning is a PD SF-4, which is based in the 1995 zoning ordinance. So, it's a little different from our code, but a little bit the same as well. The difference is...
Move this closer to you.
Okay. I'll just lean forward. There we go. Thank you. Okay. So, I'll just start over on this slide. Thanks, Chris. Yeah. So, the slide shows the site location outlined in teal on the map, and the surrounding properties are single-family residential. The request is to place a dwelling unit on the property, and the property zoning is PD SF-4, and that is from the 1995 zoning ordinance. The 95 zoning ordinance is alike, but in some ways different. The ordinance allows a smaller lot size, the like portion, I should say, is comparable to this SF-7 zoning district. So, with the PD, they amended for smaller lot sizes, which in this case is 5,500 square feet for this property. They also reduced some of the setbacks and increased some of the setbacks, so it's a different kind of lot. The applicant is requesting the accessory dwelling unit in the rear of the property, and it meets all of the requirements of that PD zoning. So, the only thing that's being requested is to place the accessory dwelling unit per the zoning requirements, and that is per the PD. This shows the site plan. Towards the top of your screen is the driveway to the property, and there's a garage with two parking spaces for the single-family residence that's existing there. That's two required parking spaces, they are provided. Towards the back, or the bottom of the screen, is the accessory dwelling unit that is located to the bottom right. There's a rectangle, and that's where the accessory dwelling unit is located. Again, it meets all of the standards of the zoning on the property, and it is not required to have any additional parking, so there's no requirement to add parking to the site. The requirements for the accessory dwelling unit is that it would have a kitchen, and this is the floor plan of the accessory dwelling unit. It shows a bedroom, a kitchen, and a bathroom space, as well as a living space. The four-foot dimension is shown on the left side of your screen there, with the arrow in 4FT. That's between the accessory dwelling unit and the main house, the main unit. And that is per the 95 code, they can do that. And we ran this through building inspections to assure that it was, be not only fire compliant, but also building code compliant, and it is. And as I went through on the last project, the specific use permits have tests for the uses that are requested through the SUP. A question is, is this use harmonious and compatible? It is. It is in the zoning for this property, provided it's on a lot size appropriate, and that is specified in that PD. In the 95 code, it required a review by city council for this kind of lot size. Lot sizes that are larger may have them by right from that 95 code, but this one is smaller and requires review. Are the use, the activities requested consistent with what's proposed, and it is? Is the nature reasonable? It is in conforming with the PD requirements. The use doesn't appear to have any impacts on the surrounding area. There were questions about parking, and the applicant has satisfied those questions. I think they're here, might be able to speak to those if you'd like. Additional regulations, again, repeat some of those that we just went through. Infrastructure is in place, and no new infrastructure is needed. Conditions may be imposed, and the rest of these are basically conformance with our city code permitting requirements and safety. One of the requirements that the PD does have is a requirement that the person that is dwelling in the accessory dwelling unit be a family relation to the person that resides in the main dwelling unit. Regarding public notice, we sent out 36 public notices letters to the people that are owners in the area, and notice was also published in the Hood County News. We'll update the count. We had nothing received in favor, and we had three notification letters in opposition to the request.
Three?
There was one, there was one that came in quite late, so it didn't get into your These are the conditions proposed. The accessory dwelling unit is as defined in the zoning ordinance. The site plan, as was displayed, is also the governing site plan under the conditions. Parking would be on an improved hard surface. The SUP is subject to all city code requirements. The SUP is subject to periodic inspections and other requirements. Our staff recommends approval subject to those conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of 6-0, also recommended approval subject to those conditions. And these would be your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Counsel?
I do have a question for Kara as we get going, before we turn it over to... I do have a question for Kara as we get going, before we turn it over to y'all for questions. Kara, did, since it's a planned development, walk me through that process where you don't have to notify everybody in the whole planned development.
Right, right.
I noticed the difference there.
Thank you, yes. When a planned development zoning has a requirement existing, then the application does not have to go through an amendment. An amendment to the PD is when you would need to get all of the owners within that PD district together to request a change. So this does not request a change to the zoning PD. It is required to come through a public hearing for an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, per the PD?
Per the PD, yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So folks, this was all done before the 2001 code was adopted, that we've been amending and changing ever since. So this was prior to that. So they are established as a vested right to do this through this process.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Chris, can you, can you expand on that? Because there's gonna be some citizens that says, well, you did this ADU in this subdivision, and I can't do it in my subdivision. So can you kind of expand on that, so that way we, we understand, or they understand it, whoever's viewing it?
I'll let Kara, because she's the one that's been carrying the water on this whole thing.
Sure. So that's, you know, that's one of the challenging things about making the decisions is what happens when people come in and say, well, I want to do that. Well, if they're in a zoning district that allows it through a public hearing or by right, they can certainly come in through a public hearing and ask for the same. If it's not allowed, then the typical answer is no, it's not allowed.
Mr. Wildley?
So does, does this neighborhood's rules or regulations or whatever specifically allow this? Because this is the first one that's ever come up.
It's, it's in the PD itself to allow...
It says you can have accessory dwelling unit.
I have a little cheat sheet here. So it's, it's allowed, and it's a lot area that is less than, less than 21,780 square feet is required to get an SUP to come through a specific use permit.
Say that again.
So if the lot area is less than 21,780, almost a half acre...
Right.
Then it is required to request a specific use permit through a public hearing.
And that's through the PD where?
That's through the PD.
That particular subdivision put that in their wording back in 90, whatever year that was, 1990 something.
So there's a sentence that says each lot must have a minimum of the half acre you just said, upon which the accessory dwelling unit may be constructed unless a lesser lot area is found by the city council to be adequate for accessory residents in approved, and approved in the SUP. So it's not necessarily allowed. Their, their, their regulations allow it if we approve it.
Right.
And we're supposed to just decide if it's a big enough lot or not?
Right.
Like we, okay?
Yeah, it's, it's an SUP.
And then the other question I had, why, two more. So this four foot from the house, five feet from the property line, which is also the house, and 10 feet from the back, that all, that all, that meets all of our other requirements?
It meets all of the PD requirements, yes.
And the four foot can be done, I specifically asked a building official about this, Jim Cook, and he said as long as they build that wall to meet the fire code, they're good to go with the four foot setback.
Okay, and the third response, negative response, did it have anything written on it besides against? The other two just said against, they didn't, they didn't put any reasons or anything.
No. Let me just double check that. Okay. No, there was nothing written, just against.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Hey Kara, does, does it give you any specifics on the, the size of the ADU? Or anything, what the maximum size or minimum size or anything like that, other than it has to have a kitchen?
Has to have a kitchen, a restroom, and a sleeping area. That's all that's required under the International Residential Code to be a living quarters.
Right. That's correct.
But no size?
No size.
There's also a requirement that a family member has to live there. So in some years in the future, and they sell this property, and someone buys it who doesn't have a family member that wants to live there, what would prevent them from just renting it out? Like, how would we know?
Well, that would, would be if somebody found out, then it would be subject to code compliance.
Would that be enforceable?
They would have to prove out the relationship.
Okay.
Make them move out, I guess, I don't know.
Does this...
It would be an injunction to legal, legal proceeding.
Does this extra inhabitant create a problem with parking or parking spots?
So we, we asked the applicant about their parking situation. I think they can speak to that better than I can.
Okay. And she's signed up to speak, so we'll, we'll do that. Other questions down here? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and Ms. Mary Franco has signed up to speak, if you'd like to come up.
If you would, make sure you turn that microphone on for us. Thank you.
I'm Mary Franco, I reside at 324 Sardius Boulevard. I am requesting a permit, permission to build a 15 by 21, Mr. Rodriguez, I have the measurements, 15 by 21, accessory dwelling unit for my son. He is my, will be living in it. It will have a one-bedroom, one-bathroom, like you saw in the picture, kitchen, small kitchen, and a restroom. And there will be the, the requirement for the firewall, but we're gonna, but Tough Shed will only let us do the whole thing. So we're gonna do the whole thing, the one, that one-hour firewall will be included. It will only be, there will be no stairs, it'll just be one-floor living, so everything will be flat, so leveled entrance and exit. I have included the egress, the 3 by 5 egress window in the, in the bedroom, but I'm also going to be adding two more 3 by 5 windows, just to have more light in and safe, for safety. I was going to do a pier and beam for flooring, but I have decided we're gonna go ahead and throw cement if I can get that permission as well, but of course, come get the permit for that, throwing a cement slab. Let's see, what else did I have? Tough Shed will be building the building. And it'll be eight-foot walls, and it'll be LP wood siding with roofs with shingles. And I think that's it.
Question for Ms. Franco?
What is the siding?
It's gonna be the LP wood siding, kind of like what I have in the back of my house. That's what that is on that side, is what, is what Tough Shed told me. And it will have the roof and shingles, the...
So there's not a masonry requirement?
That went away.
Not that I know of.
Well, unless, unless their neighborhood says you have to.
Is there an HOA?
No, sir.
Okay. So this is subject calling to our planning and zoning and state regulations and building standards. And it meets our planning and zoning and all of our building standards.
We don't know about the building standards, they haven't reviewed the plans yet.
Okay.
This is simply an SUP to allow them to go forward and submit plans for all that. This isn't approving the building permit, this is simply approving the zoning issue.
For the PD.
Yeah.
We don't know if they modified or amended their deed restrictions since then. This is just on our end through the PD, you're granting an SUP or you're not.
Grab the, the mic.
No, I'm done.
Okay. All right. So, you know, where I'm going is, is, do we have a choice? I mean, is there really, we have a choice based on...
Based on what?
Your subjectivity.
You know how I like that.
It's not objective.
You're really, you're really helping me here, thank you. Okay. All right, walk, walk us through so that we know exactly what we're, we're, what, what we would call the motion and what we would pass. It's looking good.
Battery dead, there we go.
Okay.
This is the recommended conditions. The use requested is an SUP for the accessory dwelling unit, as defined in the zoning ordinance. The requirement would be that the construction of the accessory dwelling unit would be per the site plan that's shown as exhibited A that we showed you on the screen, that would be attached to the ordinance. The parking, maneuvering, displaying, storage must be on an improved hard surface. The SUP is subject to all city code requirements, permits, inspections, inspection fees, all per the city's requirements. And number five, the SUP is subject to any additional inspections, fees, violations of the land use standards that accompany an SUP, terms and conditions stipulated in the SUP may be deemed violation of the zoning ordinance, and the SUP may become null and void, and/or the certificate of occupancy may be revoked.
So Mayor, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So do either of you ladies know if, if there's an accessory dwelling unit built in any of Jumpstone subdivision, anywhere?
Not that I know of.
I checked the map, I didn't see any access.
So this would be the first one in that subdivision, okay?
It's like Mr. Rodriguez says, this is, there will be others coming our way. So, you know, thinking we need to be pretty clear on why we would say yes or no on this one. Other questions? Questions for Ms. Franco? Any other questions here? Okay?
One, one last question for me, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Kara, how does this project impact the green space requirement for that subdivision?
So we checked the impervious surface, and it doesn't, it doesn't affect that. We checked all the standards, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Franco, other comments or questions?
No, sir, that's all I have.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public session then. And Counsel, other questions? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I, I just think that the, the counsel needs to take in consideration of the whole purpose of a specific use permit. I know it's gonna be attached to the house at this point, and if she goes with a concrete slab, it's gonna be a permanent structure. And if it goes through the process of, of ownerships, then I don't know if there's anything that we can do as a counsel when this gets transferred to the new owner, if there's any type of notification to the owner that he has to apply for a specific use permit for this specific house. So I don't know of any, unless Jeremy knows of any legal course where the, this has to be disclosed on the disclosure, a notification that, in order for them to have this dwelling unit that has a specific use permit has to be applied for, and has to be approved by the city council in order to obtain this, or leave this structure on the premise.
So what you're saying is, is the SUP, and this is a question I have now, is the SUP for the owner of the property, or is the SUP for the property itself? And, and does it last?
The SUP goes with the property, not the owner. But understanding your concern, what you could do is you could establish this SUP for a number of years, and, and staff would keep track of that, and they could come back and review it, and, and then go out to the property. It's, it, that's one of, it's subject to periodic inspections, and if someone's not in compliance, if they sold the property in a year or three years, whatever it may be, a new buyer comes in, they're subject to those things. When a, when a home is sold, there's a seller's disclosure, those are the types of things that would, you would put on the seller's disclosure, and if the city showed up and said, well, you're not in compliance, your, your SUP is revoked, then we would, we could go get an injunction and have this permanent, whatever it is, it could be removed.
Unless they came into compliance.
They could come in and get, attempt to get into compliance, that would be up to the council at that time to issue a new SUP or not. So there's, there's some oversight built into this with the periodic inspections. And, and if you were to say initially, we'll, we'll do a one-year, and let's see where we're at with this. Some of the other concerns regarding, this is the first of many, that's, that is possible in this neighborhood, but, you know, if someone came in from Harbor Lakes and said, you let somebody do one over there, you have HOA restrictions, you've got deed restrictions, that read differently, every little subdivision is a little unique. So yeah, quite possibly, there could be more from, from this subdivision. But I, many of the other subdivisions in town are, those HOAs have pretty well-established rules against this type of thing, so you're not gonna see applications come in from those subdivisions.
Mr. Kaufman?
Kara, if this was an add-on to this house, we wouldn't be having this conversation, correct? Because it, it doesn't go past the rear building line, it's observing the side yard setback. So I'm thinking if this was an add-on, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Right, it meets all the, the standards. I don't see any reason it could not be.
All right, so with that said, if they build a, obviously, they're probably gonna build a sidewalk to go from this little house to the big house, if they were to build a cover to attach the one to the other, would that be considered an add-on? And I believe the answer to that is yes.
The only thing I could think of that, that might preclude it being an add-on is if the dwelling spaces were not internally connected, and it was built as a duplex. So each one would need its own parking, each one would need its own entrance, that kind of thing.
Gotcha. I thought I had a simple fix.
Right, if the applicant were, were willing to build it connected, fully integrated, then that could be as a single dwelling unit.
So if, if the, if the property was connected to the house that's there in any way, form or fashion, if it's connected, is it an add-on?
It's an add-on, mm-hmm.
If they start, if they start leasing it, then it's a duplex.
Right?
Right, if, if it had its own separate entrance and no connectivity to the remaining, or the existing house, it would be a duplex, so they, they would need to find space for two additional parking spaces.
So if they would build a breezeway covering between the current outdoor, is that a roofed area above that patio? That 10 by 10 area, can you go to that schematic?
Probably could.
Yeah, connect the roof line with a cover, then it's considered part of the house.
We're looking for the site plan.
Yeah, we're looking for the site plan.
There we go. One more to the other direction.
You see where it says seven foot? Go back to the other one there.
Sorry.
That one.
There we go.
To the left of the proposed building, there's a seven-foot distance between the 10 by 10 area, is that a roof over that? And that's connected to your house? So it's a covered patio, so you could technically... So you could technically tie that together, and it's all one house legally.
It would need to have laws, you know, it couldn't just be a, a roof connection. It would have to be internally finished out.
Well, I, I just know what I've done in the past to get through insurance for another city, so.
Why couldn't you just go, join it there on the four foot?
Just do an add-on?
Yeah, it doesn't even have to be a door or a window there.
But, but.
Add it on.
But if that's the case, then they might not want the, want them connected, and we're allowing the same thing anyway. So, you know, I, I don't like telling people how to use their property. So to me, if it meets all the regulations and requirements and everything like you're telling us, I, I don't have a big issue with it. In my mind, I've got this huge, huge can of worms sitting in front of me going, do I wanna take the lid off? You know, and, and, but I don't feel like we can say no because, on what basis? Except that subjective thing about, it's less than a half acre, so we can just subjectively say no? That, again, we have, you know, developers come to us all the time wanting to do something with a piece of land, and, and if they're meeting the requirements, we basically have to let them do it. Now if they come in and it's a, it's, it's zoned for R seven, and they wanna do R five, we've had things like that happen before, and we've said no. Or we did a modified one where they did, they did part, they did some smaller lots and some larger lots. You know, but, but, but that's where we're, we have zoning that tells us what we're supposed to do, and, and we have to decide whether we're gonna change the zoning. This one, we're not, we're not even doing that. Apparently, there's, there's no reason not to do this, is that correct? There's not a, except this subjective because it's less than a half an acre.
That's correct.
Wow, okay.
And I'll just tell you this, uh, council, that, um, the legislature is more than likely gonna open that can of worms for you this session, so.
Kara, how, how is it by right, but we still, the city council still has the authority to say yes or no?
And that goes back to the lot size?
Okay.
The PD.
The PD zoning.
The PD provided for that, to require the SUP, the Plan Development Zoning Ordinance. It was adopted in?
Ninety-one.
Whenever.
We have a very talented, uh, planning and zoning group. What, and I, I know you can't speak for them, but what points did they hit that we haven't hit, that we haven't asked about? And they passed it six and oh, I see.
So they, they addressed the parking? And I'm not coming up with anything more, it's just not coming to my mind, yeah.
Well, council, I'll just say this, that I would recommend listening to your P and Z and moving forward, unless you have something inherently opposed to this, because, and I think you need to state the reason for that, and it needs to make good sense. But they've vetted this for you, they're our group to do that. And ultimately, you make that recommendation, but based on what I've heard tonight, I would be very reluctant to deny it legally.
Comments?
I don't, I don't know what our attorney thinks, but, I mean, you can object it subjectively, you can say, we just don't like the way.
Yeah, I mean, the, the PD, um, it, it doesn't allow for it by right. It allows that it can occur based on the, the discretion of the council. So you look at your comprehensive plan and decide, what do you want your city to look like? And if you, you wanna allow those, then vote yes, and we move on.
Other comments? No? Kara, if you'll, uh, throw those, uh, voting options up again, please? Carla? I know, I never know who's got, I just know it's not me in control. Okay. So we would have the opportunity to approve the, uh, SUP as presented. I heard no one else asking for other? The conditions, additional? Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the SUP as presented?
Mayor, I've got one question for the lawyer.
Go ahead.
Can we approve the SUP with the condition upon the sale of the house?
No, no, you, you, you can't tie down the property rights between a buyer and a seller later. They, they, they would have to, again, um, on the seller's disclosure, which, you know, is a pretty standard TREC form, they would have to divulge that information that the accessory dwelling is subject to an SUP by the city, and there are conditions that go with that.
Okay, all right.
And so, I, 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 I understand the question, you know, we wanna protect the city, so later on, something happens, and someone comes in and we say, well, you're in violation, sorry, y- you move out. Their, their, um, actions wouldn't be against the city, it would be against the seller for failing to disclose that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the SUP as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Alum? Mr. Alum, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear none ayes, that's passes six and oh. Thank you, council. Thank you, uh, staff, Kara, thank you very much. That's, uh, good, whether you like it or not, good, good work, thank you. All right, we'll move on to seven point three. Consider approving a request of Nathan Haskins for the approval of an onsite sewage facility for the property located at twenty-three oh five Weatherford Highway, located within the city limits. Mr. Cawthon?
Mayor, I'll, I'll turn this over to our Public Works Director, Chester Nolan. He's been working with this project. I think it's been somewhat of a mess. We're trying to get everybody on the same page.
Turn your microphone on, microphone. This item is to clean up a prior mistake. Previously, this property was approved for the onsite sewer facility by the county, uh, even though it's inside the city limits, and that was several years ago. We just need to approve the onsite sewer facility as it exists today in the, in the current city limits. The property is not within three hundred feet of a sewer line. There is a main that is close by, it's a force main, and just by engineering hydraulics, uh, we don't attach a, uh, single house, uh, sewer line to a force main. Because of the pressure that the force main has, it would cause a backup, and it'd be a real problem. So all we're asking is to approve the onsite sewage facility for this particular property.
Chester, is this already installed?
Yes, it's already in the ground. We wouldn't be able to inspect it without digging, having it, uh, excavated all over. As far as we know, the county did inspect it when it was installed, and there were no issues. Uh, the person that inspected it, uh, remembers it and said, yeah, it's all good. So we're just trying to clean up the problem that, that exists.
Get them, get them on square with us, that's good.
Yes.
So, um, I know there's a fee that normally is charged when we go through this process. I would suggest to council, since it's already done, and we're just cleaning up administrative stuff, to not charge this fee as well as we move forward.
That's correct.
Okay. So I, I think you need to probably put that in your motion, if you could. All right, we'll turn it over to questions.
Do we know how long this has been, already been in the ground?
Mayor, I believe it's been in the ground for several years, and exactly how many, I couldn't tell you.
All right, I was just looking at the, uh, the paperwork, and I couldn't, I saw the date one eight twenty twenty-five.
Oh, no, sir.
That's when we got a hold of it.
That's when we got a hold of it.
Yes, sir.
Questions, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr.?
See, here's the septic back here, here's the light.
Mr. Alum? Did you gentlemen have questions?
Okay.
All right.
So the tank's in the ground, but the septic system's not functioning yet, is that right? It's never been?
No, it, it is functioning.
But the house isn't there yet?
Yeah. Well, um.
It says proposed house. Is there an existing pri, an existing house there?
I believe there is.
It's right here. It's not on that map.
It's not on here. It's, it's this property right here.
Is the owner of this property here?
No. I don't believe so.
Okay. That's where they're building a big barn, isn't it?
I believe that's.
Is that a barn dominium they're building?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's, there's no house listed in cab.
Yeah.
It's not up in cabs, it's just the land.
There's a structure there, there's no house.
I mean, if, if it's already installed and functioning?
Yes.
I don't wanna charge the fee. But if we're gonna have to go out and inspect it and go through that process, I think we need to charge the fee.
There's nothing to inspect, sir.
They're just gonna tie onto it.
Pardon?
They're just gonna tie onto it.
Yes.
With the new building that's built.
With the new building, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to approve a request of Nathan Haskins for the onsite sewage facility for the property located at twenty-three oh five Weatherford Highway, located within the city limits? And I'm gonna amend that to have no inspection fee, or no city inspection fee for this, uh, project.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion, or makes a motion, and Mr. Corrigan will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That will be approved six and oh. Your, uh, Mr. Cor, uh, Cawthon, your staff is, uh, working hard and doing exceptional work tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seven point four. Consider approving a proposal from Snyder Engineering LLC doing business as Synergy to perform services along State Highway three seventy-seven between Pirate Drive and West of Over Street Boulevard to meet the needs of the Tech Dot construction project for the US Highway three seventy-seven and Highway one forty-four as required by Tech Dot. And consider adopting ordinance number twenty-five dash oh eight, amending the operating budget for the utility fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I'll turn this over to Public Works Director as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, uh, council, um, this should have been on the agenda previously, but the, we failed to pick it up. This is for the electrical, uh, appliances that will need to be relocated, removed in some manner or fashion for the construction and reconstruction of, of Highway three seventy-seven and one forty-four. The cost for this is in excess of sixty-seven thousand dollars. And with this is an ordinance to amend the operating budget for the utility fund to complete this. This is purely an oversight that we simply missed, and it should have been on previous, uh, agenda to, for approval. And this is for the electrical part of, uh, I think at the last council meeting, you approved all of the water and sewer operations, uh, a million eighty thousand dollars, and this one is considerably less, so I recommend approval.
The workout, the scope is sixty-seven thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, sixty-seven thousand and change, I don't remember the exact amount, but.
Sixty-seven seven, it's on the page.
So our budget amendment's for seventy thousand, I believe.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gives us a little wiggle room in case we need something else.
Yes, sir.
But this is for our electrical, uh, utility that we sell electricity through, our distribution lines.
And then after this engineering's done, then we'll know the financial impact to the city to actually do the construction, the work to move the lines, correct? That's what this will result in?
We'll get a probable opinion of cost, and then we'll advertise the project for bids, and then we'll bring it back to you to award the bid.
Yep. Same fashion as what the water and sewer will come back to you.
Questions? Okay, any else? Mr. Cawthon? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve a proposal from Snyder Engineering doing business as Synergy to perform services along State Highway three seventy-seven between Pirate Drive and West of Over Street Boulevard to meet the needs of the Tech Dot construction project for US Highway three seventy-seven and Highway one forty-four as required by Tech Dot? And we will adopt ordinance number twenty-five dash oh eight, amending the operating budget for the utility fund for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That will pass six and oh.
Thank you, Mayor, as council.
Thank you. Uh, we will move to the number seven point five. Consider adopting resolution number twenty-five dash oh five, evidencing support of the proposed aesthetics and the respective cost of the US Highway three seventy-seven breakout project.
Thank you, Mayor. Carla, is it possible for you to open Exhibit A for that? Perfect. And could you go to page fifteen in that slide deck? Oh, I don't know if it's numbered that way in your slide deck. Yeah. You're doing good, keep going. There you go, stop, go back to that one. Yeah. Page fifty-nine in this slide deck, um, I, I, what I was reading was, I guess I needed bifocals.
There you go.
So let me just tell you all how we got to where we're at today, and what we're trying to accomplish. Uh, we are in no fashion approving anything financially to, uh, guarantee anything other than the general sense of, of the council is to move this direction, and that's why it's in the form of a resolution instead of an ordinance. Uh, the city staff, planning staff, engineering, public works, myself, uh, deputy city manager, assistant city manager, all set in many meetings with half and associates to, uh, w- work on the aesthetics for the highway project. So on this page, you can see on the left side, that's the standard in which Tech Dot would normally build this project. And so we wanted to see about aesthetic improvements, and so we put together, uh, numerous selected enhancements. For instance, instead of those round concrete pillars on the left, we've suggested a, a concrete pillar with stamped concrete that goes up to that beam, and then a little architectural, uh, s- feature on the top with the star and the circle. And also, we selected colors instead of this being plain. And so that's, that's where we kinda got started. And like I say, this took about a dozen meetings with these engineers to refine this, to get it to the point we're looking at today. And we have had these engineers here, and they've showed you the, the slide deck in the past. Uh, if you could go to the next page, Carla? So this is a good shot of what Peluxi Road Bridge could look like. You can see on the left what it would look like without the enhancements, and then on the right. Now then, that is a special concrete paint that is applied to that, uh, material. You also see that those little cathedral, cathedral windows that are on that bridge, those are aesthetics compared to the solid Jersey barrier on the left picture. And so we feel like, uh, as people come through Granbury, especially from the, uh, north and the south, that we want to make a statement that we are an exceptional community, and this is a great place to live, work, and play. And so that was a motivating factor of trying to make this look more appealing as you drive through our community. If you go to that next slide, uh, you can see the standard wall would be a gray wall, uh, with, with some sort of a, a normal pattern. Uh, we, we suggested that we look at the selected enhancement, go with the, uh, the color. The concrete itself, uh, is stamped, and it's, it's in panels, and they fit together like a jigsaw puzzle. And, uh, so they're, they're colored that color, and then, uh, the trim would have that sand color. And so you can see that, you can also see in the background those light poles that we'll talk about in a little bit. And, uh, where there's a fence required, that's a, a barrier that might, may or may not be included. Uh, I don't think we have a requirement for that fence anywhere. Only where you have a railroad underneath a bridge, do you need a fence? If you go to the next slide, uh, you can see the difference in the, the, the columns, or the signage poles. The one on the right is the black that we've selected, the one on the left is the galvanized color, coloration. So, I mean, you can see the, imagine the difference of the galvanized piping or metal in correlation with the gray concrete, whereas we're proposing. whereas we're proposing black metal with the sandstone or, or limestone colored masonry or, or block walls, so you kind of get the idea of the enhancement. And then the next page, uh, that's the intersection at Paluxi Road as it relates to the pedestrian crossing. And we're, we're talking about some kind of a stamped concrete ADA compliant. On the left, you can see what it looks like. Uh, everything's monotone with the, with the poles, and the walk, crosswalk is delineated simply by that painted stripe. Uh, the enhancement over to the right would be the stamped concrete colored, uh, with the contrast that ADA requires. And also underneath, uh, like that center median, it doesn't have rocks, uh, you know, like chunks of rocks. It's got actual concrete stamped to be maintenance free. By the way, we're gonna be responsible for the maintenance either way, so, uh, that's something to think about. And then, uh, you can see that we, we looked at different patterns and stuff, so uh, at the end of the day, you can kind of see the direction we headed with that one, two, three, four numbers there. The next page, please. So there's the streetlights themselves where they are. This will populate all the way through town is what we envision as we move forward from the breakout phase all the way to twenty forty. Uh, we'll have these black light poles. Uh, it's what we suggest, and, um, I believe that we chose the, uh, the first, the middle picture is what I believe we chose. Yes, it is. And the, the one on the right, the far right, we did not choose that look. We chose the other. And you can see it's got the city logo on the Paluxi sign. And so those are small details, but they add up to make a big difference. I think there's one more page. Those are some more enhancements. Instead of the typical Tech Dot Cobra headlight, we selected, uh, the decorative lights like we have around town already. Uh, and they would be black with acorn lantern at the top. And there's some information there related to the lumens and what have you. We'll deal with all that as we come along. The, I think the important part is we wanted about three thousand K instead of sixty-five hundred, which makes it, uh, a little warmer light, and we don't want a big blue light as you're coming across that bridge. And let's go to the next slide. So there's a, uh, a, a barrier that's required, um, in some areas, especially with the bridge. You can see that standard barrier. And then, uh, on the lake bridge itself, the top picture on the right all, is, is what we're dealing with for the exterior of that bridge. So when you're driving by it in front of the lake, that's what you would see. You'd see those light poles. You would see those, uh, columns, those decorative columns. You notice they're not the same cathedral style, uh, hole on the Paluxi River Bridge or the Paluxi, uh, Highway Bridge. It's more decorative, and it's, it is the centerpiece of our community as people come through town. They all are driving across the, the lake and seeing the, seeing the lake, uh, for the first time possibly, and the aesthetics that go along with that. On the interior of the bridges, you would have that black iron. Um, also on the interior of the bridge, from that, uh, from, from the number one slide on the right to the number two slide, there is a ten-foot trail that goes between there. And then you've got your traffic lanes. And then on the interior lane, you would also have another one of those in, interior vehicular barrier uh, with the black. And that's mounted on top of concrete. You can kind of see, um, that was another option at the very bottom there with the cathedral. But, uh, for the, for the Brazos River Bridge, if you're looking at it from the, from the lake, either side of the lake, you're gonna see that decorative sandstone colored concrete barrier with the lights mounted on that. And then there's a ten-foot walk path on both sides, the north and south side of that bridge. And then you'll have this iron, um, black structure to protect the pedestrians from car traffic. And so that's, that's the direction that we've headed. And you can kind of see it in, in top, down at the bottom left, it says type C two, uh, four oh two. That's, that's the way that black would look. That metal part is the black. And you can see this same configuration on Chisholm Trail, uh, it, but it's painted green with the beige. So that gives you an idea. If you're over in that area, just take a glance at that and, and see that. And so it's very functional. It's very affordable. Wasn't as expensive as some of the other options we were considering. And the next one. So there you can see it again. Then, yeah, go to the next one. We suggested putting some lights underneath the bridge. Our bridge doesn't necessarily gonna look like that. We don't know what the bottom of our bridge is gonna look like, but this is a illustration of another bridge somewhere else in Texas that they used to illustrate their LED lights. Um, and they can be, the color could be changed. They're LED, so you can work with them any way you want, so. And then the next one. Uh, I think there was, yeah. We chose no art, okay? There were some options here for us to choose art, but we chose no art. And, uh, so we're, we're, we're looking at the, uh, limestone bottom, bottom left, recommended options, buff and sand, limestone walls, and the trim, it would be in the buff. And then, again, no art. And then what we're gonna do in the future is apply for grant funding with Tech Dot for the landscaping features that we want. These are just some different areas. We're talking about wildfire seeding and shade trees where we can. But all in all, we're not addressing landscaping at this point in time in this conversation tonight. But I want you to see that's being considered as we move forward. It's gonna have to be addressed, and they do have a grant program to work with us on that, so. Again, we'll have to maintain it, just like we do all the other areas, that we've used their grant funding to plant trees and, and grass and wildflowers in the past. We all love our blue bonnets. We want to make sure that we have blue bonnets when it's over with. Um, the center median, you can see that, uh, we're gonna go with some kind of, uh, landscaping instead of a, a rock or something that... So that's gonna require mowing and maintenance, and so that's, some of those options are still yet to be determined. These are some ideas that we can have as we, uh, um, go forward. It, we, we, we voted out, uh, decomposed granite. We, we voted that out. And ornamental grass is preferred and recommended, so that's kind of where we're headed with grass and landscaping. And we might be able to do some ziriscap like pictured, so that it's not a water hog to take care of this. But again, that'll go into the grant project for the landscape enhancements. Next slide? I was hoping to find the, the, uh, slide with the columns for the bridge. Maybe that's the next slide. No, keep going. I don't know where it is. Maybe here's something. Nope. Keep going. All right, so you can see the breakout project in the highlighted area, and so what we're talking about for right now is that shaded area. It's kind of got, got the green tone for the cost estimate that's in your packet here as an exhibit. I'm not sure they've got a diverging diamond intersection drawn there, but I'm not sure that's what that is. Yeah. Yeah, it's not. Yeah. Next page. There's the diverging diamond. There you go. So you can see the changes coming. And, uh, next slide? I appreciate everybody's involvement in helping Tech Dot in their public comment process, and they listen to the council about your concerns, and they've incorporated the concerns that you talked about. So as we move forward, we end up with something that everybody likes. Next slide, please. So you can kind of see the, the purple is intersections, green is raised median, um, orange is a side path, main road obviously is yellow, the bridge is brown, various ramps for traffic. Uh, there's some new ramps involved. You can see that. Then where we have walls, retaining walls, where we're talking about that stamped concrete being the wall, you can see that in blue, and then the frontage road is the magenta or whatever that may be, that light colored pink. Next? There's sections of it. I'm not sure we can, need to go there. Next section, so you can see that focus areas, landscape enhancement. Yeah, they were trying to get us to do some kind of airport distinction theme. We didn't, didn't want that art. Now, they may put some signage up that says airport, you know? But they were trying to encourage some artwork, you know, and, um, to be on those retaining walls, so. That's not us. We're a town of history, so. No, it won't be anywhere. I, I think that's the, uh, Paluxi or the Pirate Drive. And next? Next? There's Paluxi. It, it turns in everything there, doesn't it? It's really something how we need to, you'll be able to access the hospital from three seventy-seven, which is very important. New access. I was really surprised that the water tire gets to stay. That's the, the, the welcome to Granberry sign on that side of town, so to speak. And then next? You can kind of see some features. Lot of landscaping to be considered. Next? There you go again, next. And you can probably skip through all those detail and the diverging diamond intersection. Gonna make our life better, they say. Next? I believe them. I love it over at Colony, by the way. I've seen it there. And next? So visualization, next. That's standard versus what we're talking about. Standard versus that. You see the difference? Uh, let's look at the next one. I think that's what we've, what we've been looking for. On each corner of the bridge, there'll be two on both sides, a north side and two on the south side. And it'll be a, a lighted with LED that says Granberry on it. Kind of like Chisholm Trail has a, a, uh, artwork of the trendy river on their columns when you get to that river part of the Chisholm Trail. It's a good comparison. If you're driving that way, you can see kind of the, the idea. And then next, I think that's about it. Yeah, we, we did away with, uh, aviation theme, any kind of art. We thought also that if we wanted to add art, we've got a cultural arts commission that would be more than happy to, um, enlist artists to do a project and present to them and present to y'all what it could be. But that can be added after this whole project's over, so. Next, that was another art. Railroad tracks. Yeah. They had all kinds of ideas for us. We rejected them all. Uh, columns, we, we chose the far right. Some more ideas they had. All right, so that gives you an idea. If you could open up, um, exhibit B is the estimate. And what, reason I brought this in the form of a resolution to y'all is it's time for us to tell the design team with Hafen Associates and Tech Dot, this is the general idea of what we're wanting to do. And this cost that's on exhibit B, it's about two point seven million dollars. It's not firm. I mean, if you, in two years, the price of paving has gone up astronomically over sixty-five percent. So this is part of paving project, and we don't know what it'll cost yet, but they're gonna put it into the final plans, if y'all are in agreement with it. At some point, they will bring back a, what they call an advanced funding agreement, and they will ask us to take that to the council and get it approved and write a check to them for the amount of what's projected to be. And then when the bids actually come in, and if it's more, we'll have to pay that difference at some point through the project. And if it's less, we will certainly be refunded, so, um, that's, that's kind of the way this works. And so before I told them, hey, this is what we want, I wanted to bring it by y'all one last time. I know y'all have seen all this in the past at least once, but I've seen it so many times, I forgot how many, you know? And, uh, that's kind of where we're at. Any questions? Anything you want to, that you're diametrically opposed to, we'd like to change? Consensus is you like it or you don't like it? Just tell us what you want to do. And if you're in agreement for me to tell them that the, that the selections that have been made are good to go, then I will tell them that, and they will incorporate those into the blueprints of the project.
Counsel? Comments? Yeah, I, I applaud the work again, uh, you and your staff that, you know, bring us a high-quality product.
I, I would like to shout out for, for Joanne Kamen. She has extensive experience in this line of work and was front and center on this all the way, and we want to thank her for that. It's, uh, very, very helpful to have her assist with all that.
I, go ahead.
See, I know when you, you know, when you drive around and you just see the standard stuff, you know, like drive down the interstate and it's just a standard overpass, and then you go through a city where they've spent a little bit extra. They've done it in Fort Worth. They've done it in Dallas. You, I mean, all over the place. It really stands out. You know, when you see these overpasses that are all, you know, they're, they're, they're just dressed up. And, and I never really understood why is it this way some places and not others who paid for that? Now, I know. But it, it, you know, it really will make our city a, a much more attractive place to drive into when you're the first time here, whether you've been here for years. I think it'll make everybody proud of it.
The, uh, uh, comment that I have about, uh, is I know that there's been conversations with the judge, uh, county judge about dark city, dark county, dark sky, dark sky city or dark sky county. This lighting that we have here, uh, more than likely accommodates that.
Yeah. In fact, um, it's, the, the light fixtures that we have have a, uh, a cape over the top to prevent the light from going north up to the heavens. It directs it to the ground. And so, uh, also, it's not gonna be a bright blue light or something like it. It's gonna be a warm, uh, warm temperature lighting system. And yeah, there is more lights, but you're required to have lights for pedestrian, uh, areas, and they do have to shine down, and they're directional. They're designed especially for that, to light the pedestrian area and also for the street area. Our goal is to not light the lake with it, but to light the street with it.
Right.
And so there will be, you know, uh, blinds on the lakeside that would prevent that from happening. And the, the late, the light underneath, um, that, the bridge would be a nice feature for people boating. Safety feature for sure.
Sure.
But I can see them, you know, doing a lot of fishing around those blue lights or whatever as they, uh, as crop season comes around, so. But they've got a lot of work to get there, so, uh, we're trying to get this off the ground in fall of twenty twenty-seven, and we've got to move our utilities by the end of twenty twenty-six, so.
Yeah.
Got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, uh, there are a few of us that are meeting today with, uh, Tech Dot. Uh, I guess there are about thirty engineers there or skips that ask, you know, I'm not sure what they all did, but, uh, it was engineering, engineers out of Dallas, Fort Worth, Austin, uh, all working on the plans for three seventy-seven. I'm tired of working on the plans. I wanted to dig some dirt, but we're not there yet. But we do have to get this, uh, up front as well. Good work. So any other questions, comments? Do I hear a motion to, uh, you know, encourage Mr. Coffin to continue on and?
Pass the resolution, yeah.
Pass this resolution, so. Let me get that. If you put the, uh, resolution back up. Ms. Walker? I can read it right here. To have a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-five oh five evidencing support of the proposed aesthetics and respective cost of the US Highway three seventy-seven breakout project.
So moved.
Mr. Overdure makes a motion?
Second.
Seconded by. Mr. Olin? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I hear no nays, no noes. That'll be six and oh. Pass the six and oh. Thank you again for the, uh, work on that. Yeah, and, uh, engineers. Seven point six. Discuss and add suggestions under edits to the Fries and Nichols consulting team on the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan draft that has been presented to the city council of planning and zoning. This was our plan as we talked about, uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and, or in our special meeting, and tonight, we're gonna break out and talk about, uh, the first one hundred eleven of what, four hundred and fifty pages or so?
Hundred and eleven pages tonight.
The first, yeah, tonight. So I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, um, because this is such a massive project, and we're trying to limit how late we meet tonight, uh, first off, I'd like to recognize David Jones with Fries and Nichols. He's here to help us wade through this with, answer questions and provide resources to us as we talk about it. provide resources to us as we talk about it. Uh, but basically, we covered in what we're, our homework was to do the community snapshot, the guiding principles and community goals, future land use, transportation and housing sections of this comprehensive plan. I've sat down with staff and gone over my comments and thoughts and, uh, but before I weighed into mine, y'all may have some specific pages that you would like to address and turn to, or, or a paragraph that you were wondering why it says that, and you could tell us, uh, what it was. There's obviously some typos that have been addressed. And, uh, so I wouldn't camp out on those too much, but I would like to know what they are to make sure we didn't miss them too, so. You don't need to camp out on them, but illuminate them if you would. Uh, like on page nine, for instance, uh, that paragraph talking about the highways that go through here, that's been corrected. Little, little things like that, but, um, I don't know if you realize it or not, but it's not a Santa Fe railroad. It's Fort Worth Western Railroad. And they've got it listed as Santa Fe, so. Burlington Northern and Santa Fe, so. That's on page ten. Yeah. I would say, before we get to Eddie there, um, all the, all the, um, figures in the back where there's exhibits I talked to Kara about, they're really fuzzy, not very legible. I hope we can improve on that. And we'll certainly provide our GIS person to help with that if need to, but, uh, we'll talk about that. But I'll just turn counsel loose to see what they want to talk about, and they've had time to review it. And then if I've got some things that they didn't cover, I'll go over those, so.
So you guys want to start? If you've got a page, we're just starting out at this end and, and, uh, if you've got something on page fourteen or before that, and nobody's got anything until you get to Eddie and he's got page eighteen, you know, we can just run through these pages up to one eleven or not. Do you have anything, Mr. Olin?
It's, uh, very impressive. Um, I don't have any specific concerns.
Okay, all right. Mr. Overdure? It's just going to be me and you, Eddie. Go ahead. No, Mr. Wilder?
You know, I, when we saw this last time when we were with P and Z, it, you know, I'd gone through it that weekend before when I got the book, and, and it was a lot. And, and I requested this extra time. I really appreciate that to Mr. Kaufman. I've been through it about three or four times now, and, and this is just real impressive. I mean, I, I was, I was concerned about the, I asked specifically, I want to see the old future land use map and the new one. I want to be able to look at them next to each other, and I was able to do that. You know, there, there's not a lot of changes, but, but, you know, I didn't know that. And, and there were some things that really jumped out, you know, when the public input. Downtown is so important. You know, I, I would have thought years ago, everybody'd say, oh, it's the lake. The lake is what makes this place unique. But, but, you know, there's downtown really stands out, and I know Tammy's happy to hear that because, you know, we do so much here. Another thing that really stood out to me was half of the land in the city, in the city limits, is unoccupied. And that's, that just, that was almost shocking to me. But, you know, we have a lot of land inside the loop between fifty-one, three seventy-seven and the loop on the west side of town, and a lot of land between three seventy-seven and highway four on the west side of Fall Creek Highway, you know, coming back towards town. And, and there's going to be just a lot of development that's going to happen in the next decade here. You know, and, and I know there's a, there's folks out there that wish our town could just stay little. You know, we're, we're not a little town anymore. We're a city. And it's going to grow. And, and, you know, when I have patients in my office and they ask me about the growth, I say, you know, the responsibility of council is to make sure that it grows responsibly. And so, you know, you don't want a single-family house sitting on three seventy-seven. I mean, it, you know, you, so we have, and, and the, and the future land use map shows that. You know, there's buffer zones where this is commercial, and then the houses are on the inside of that where they're not right next to the highway. Um, you know, we just went through the thing with the electric company. Not necessarily to our advantage, but we tried. But, but, you know, we, we want the place to look great. The, the last item that we just talked about, how we're going to, you know, pay extra money to have the, the improvements to three seventy-seven, you know, be real attractive. Um, I just, this whole, the, the project looks fantastic, so thank you for that.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I forgot your name, sir. What was it?
David.
David Jones?
Yes, sir.
All right, David. Um, so David, can you, the first thing is that you're basing all this information on the American Community Survey. Can you tell us a little bit about that organization? And is, is there another organization that helps you put this type of information together?
Sure. Um, the American Community Survey is kind of the, in between the decennial census, so they do a five-year update of census data, and it's not just population, it's demographics, housing, um, all sorts of data all around the country. So we, we typically rely on that, and it's all publicly available data that anybody can go and pull. Um, you know, you don't need a special subscription or license to, uh, to obtain it. Um, and we typically rely on that because it's consistent, uh, you know, year after year. Census Bureau is a pretty predictable organization. They're required by the constitution to do a ten-year update, um, of population of cities and counties. So we use that because it allows us to look backward, um, but it also allows us to make pretty reliable predictions, uh, moving forward. So there's a section of the code where, or, I'm sorry, a section of the plan where we, um, have population projections, soing, population going out twenty, thirty years. We base that on your historic growth, um, and that's kind of the foundation of those numbers is using the ACS, which is part of the, part of the Census Bureau. So there's, there's other, you know, numbers out there, um, like COG or the Texas Water Development Board. Often we'll look at those, um, just to see how they compare. Um, but in general, ACS is kind of the, the gold standard, just because their consistency, you know, they've been around since, uh, seventeen ninety, I think, so, um, that's typically what, what we rely on. And, uh, we do, do those, uh, projections internally and we, we pull those numbers internally.
So that five-year projection that they're using, the, the five-year estimate, so what years, what years is that covering?
Uh, the most recent numbers, um, came out in December of last year, and those are twenty twenty-three numbers.
Twenty twenty-three.
They, they update those on a yearly, uh, yearly cycle.
So we don't have information, uh, of twenty twenty-four?
Not, not at the ACS level, yeah.
Okay.
Um, typically, like NCT COG will, will put out population estimates for cities. Those rely heavily on self-reporting, uh, within the city. So if you look back historically at those, you know, staff changes and the cities grow over time, sometimes those numbers get a little wobbly, you know, depending on which city you're looking at. So the level of consistency isn't quite as good with ACS, although it is a little bit more updated because you're maybe looking at twenty twenty-four numbers instead of twenty twenty-three. So what we did was took the, the building permit data that was provided by the city, and in this updated draft, you know, following the comment period, um, we'll lay that data kind of alongside the housing unit data to get a picture, to fill in the gaps a little bit more about, um, you know, the development activity that's occurred since twenty twenty. Since some of that, um, census data, you know, is a couple of years behind, uh, we'll fill that in by showing here's how many building permits have been issued to get a more up-to-date look.
Well, I'll have to say that our population and growth rate will probably exceed what your estimate, uh, is on this, uh, thanks to Tammy, because there's so many advertisements that go around, uh, having people come here and visit. And plus, we get a lot of people from California that, once one California comes here, they spread the word, hey, this is Granbury, so.
Not to mention New York, New Jersey, yeah.
So, um, I'm going to start with page thirteen. Uh, that was the first thing. It was, uh, trying to understand the ACS in the five-year that, um, uh, the one thing that stood out was under population age, and it's the, almost to the very last, um, sentence on the first paragraph. It says, Granbury's community will continue to need essential services and facilities related to aging and place. You know, as, as a population, uh, where it says, see figure five, uh, that's the first paragraph. So that little, after the first, uh, comma, it says Granbury's community will continue to need essential services and facilities. Do you actually list those type of facilities and services that would be related to aging? Or no?
We touch on that in, uh, the housing chapter, and I believe a little bit in the growth management.
I think that's, that's, uh, that's great that you mentioned that because it gives the council something to look at, uh, when we're actually looking to, um, bring in additional businesses and, and the services that we need within this community. But I also think that, um, the age may, the aging may differ from this five-year estimate in comparison to the next five-year estimate, because we may have a younger generation of people moving in, based on some of the information that I had. I found that some of the figures, when you say see figure so-and-so, um, don't really pertain to the information that's in that paragraph. So you might want to see some of the, uh, see figure this. So when you go through that, I, I found some of those that were not related to the, to the paragraph that you were talking about. And, and one example is if you go to the next page, um, so in the housing type in Occam C, the second paragraph, uh, it says, see, uh, figure eight, which is relating to the two, uh, on the, on the left paragraph, bottom-left paragraph, right? It says right there, the two most common housing units, uh, for residents are one-unit detached, single-family homes, which is fifty-seven percent, and twenty or more units, which is eighteen percent. And it says, see figure eight. And, and your figure eight,
Figure seven.
It should be figure seven, right? So it shouldn't be figure eight. It should be figure seven. So that's, you, so going through some of these paragraphs, especially like the household side, it says, see figure ten. You may want to see figure five on that one instead of figure ten. So I just, if y'all could go through those and make sure that your figures are actual to the, to the information that you're talking about.
We, we did identify the, the source of that issue. It's with the software that we use to create the document. So we've, we've identified that and, and corrected it. So the next draft will have that all updated.
Gotcha. All right. And, and that was most of the, the, the information. And in, uh, the next, the next, um, page, I was, I was making annotations. How do y'all, uh, under employment location, I believe it's the next page after?
Census data again provides that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, kind of wondering how many, there's, how many workers commute outside the city limits, which places significant demand on roads at peak? I think this is a very interesting statement, which is the last statement in the employment location paragraph, is because what, what our objective is for, um, for a city council is to bring businesses that we can, we know that some of those people that are leaving out of town to try to stay in town. So this, yeah, so that way they have, like Greg is saying right here, whispering in my ear, so they can have a livable wage to stay in town, so we can keep those economic dollars in, in Granbury.
And by the way, that's how you get a younger population too, is, you know, they can live and work in, in the city to, to align with the, the last goal you mentioned. And I'll, I'll point out, um, something on, on this page, where we're listing industry and its percentage of industry by employment. Um, this relates to where people who live in Granbury are going for work. So when you, when you see the, ten point seven percent is manufacturing, you look around town and go, well, where are all the manufacturing jobs in Granbury? They're leaving the city to go to those manufacturing jobs. So the, the portion, um, of the economic development section where we look at things like location quotient and kind of where you're over saturated and undersaturated, we're going to the Bureau of Labor Statistics for those numbers, because that paints a picture of what's happening in the city. So the, the goal is if, if there's this many workers who are driving outside the city for work, then we align that with jobs, you know, using the economic development strategies to, um, attract those industries, make sure we're reserving land in, in areas where those businesses can thrive.
And I mean, I got a lot of stuff that I just kind of circle just to bring to attention, but I just don't want to monopolize this whole time, and I'll let, uh, turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you.
I, I will make a, uh, comment on the, on the page seventeen that Eddie was just talking about. There, the eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-four workers that commute in, on a, uh, I guess this is a daily basis, or this?
Uh, yes, I believe this is average daily.
I just, uh, I just want Mr. Kaufman to note that I, I see that, and I know that it'll, I'll hear about it in the budgeting process. But that is one of the things that, you know, we look at, we look at our community and say, how many people are coming in that we provide services for? When you start looking at the ratios of, of, uh, inhabitants to the cost of service. We provide a lot of services for a lot of other people, some, some bringing work in and some, you know, some many, thank you, Tavie, visiting our, our location.
Boy, you're on that figure. I would suggest that those numbers are backwards.
You think we have eight thousand going out and thirty-five hundred coming in?
I don't know. It, it says seventy percent, well, it says in, in appointment location. With only a fraction of the residents living and working in Granbury, our statistics in the Economic Development Department are seventy percent of our workers commute out of the city. So we need to look at that some more, probably.
Okay.
So you won't be using that in the budget?
Not yet. I'll be getting it the way I, I'll make sure it's verified before I use it, let me put it that way.
I know you do.
But, um, that's, seventy percent is what we've been looking at. Many workers commute outside the city limits, which places significant demand on the road at peak morning and evening times. Um, I know our school is our largest employer in the county. Our hospital's right there. We do have some manufacturing in the city, but most of it's outside the city. Uh, there was another topic listed, uh, waste management. Solid Waste Management is a big employer in our town, and I question that. I would probably need to set up, I'd like to set up a time to have a teams meeting with you to go through this book, like I did with Kara, if she hadn't already shared with you what I talked about. But, uh, I've been in, I've been out so much this last couple of weeks, it's kind of discombobulated, but, um, there's lots, I've got, see all these tabs? Yeah, we don't want to go through that tonight, but I'll get with you.
Okay, great.
And, and by all means, folks, if y'all see something that you want to talk about, do that. That's what we're here for.
The, uh, I, you know, appreciate very much when you talk about creating good jobs in Granbury. This is on page twenty-three. Is among one of the biggest priorities for the future of Granbury. And then you slip to, uh, page thirty. Granbury's greatest issues and the businesses that Granbury, Granbury residents would like to see. Very much appreciate those, those, uh, you know, they're not, they're not as subjective, if you will. Those, uh, that, that information coming from the data that is being presented here, it helps, it helps the council immensely. And the planning group, the whole group is to, you know, how are we hanging in there with this, uh, comprehensive plan? I had, uh.
Internet access on that page, lack of high-speed internet. I'm sorry, I disagree with that. There's a survey that the state of Texas done, and it shows a whole different world. I know we do have pockets in neighborhood that were recently added with some broadband from Spectrum. Listen, if they want internet to work from home, Starlink is available. You know, that's just, I felt like a lot of this is copy and paste. And so, uh, that and the next page, I just called them my angry page, so.
We, we've had kind of internal conversations with, with staff about maybe improving the way we're, we're depicting some of this. Uh, we have an appendix where we've got all of our community input. That way, we're not just deciding what's in and what's out. It's all in there. Maybe shifting, you see the label that we've got on here, maybe shifting some of that to that appendix and, you know, making sure that what we're highlighting in the front portion of the plan links up better with, because, yeah, improving internet access isn't one of our main recommendations, uh, in the plan. It's capturing what was said.
Some of these bullets were. Some of these bullets were taken from one comment out of 195 people and put in here as a priority. And I'm sorry, I don't agree with it. I don't agree with having tiny homes for our community. And it says that specifically somewhere in the housing that we need to have an area delineated for tiny homes. Well, the legislature is probably going to mandate that anyway. But everybody I showed a picture to of tiny homes is, "I don't want that near me." And so, uh, one person saying that comment at, at this, one of the many meetings that we had, I don't see how that warrants putting that in there as a directive. So that's kind of where I'm coming from and that's where council needs to weigh in. One person saying it, does that mean that much to you? If it does, then we need to put it in. So those are the things I'm hoping to hash out with them as we plow through this together over the next couple of weeks.
On, uh, page 58, I just look at, looking at the numbers and I immediately jump in there and said, "Oh, my gosh, another 878 million in property taxes and, uh, 45 million in, uh, sales tax." Page 58, over 20 years. And I've been, yeah, I've been, I am jaded with our state and our federal government telling me how much money they're going to save or we're only going to spend X and then find out or that it's, the savings are generally over 20 years. The X that's going to be spent is going to be tomorrow. And I didn't want Tammy to go in and out spending this 45,000, $45 million tomorrow. It's just, it's just in presentation there. You have to, you have to search to figure out that, oh, that's over 20 years. It's not on an annual basis. The thoroughfare plans, I just looked at on page, uh, something, 67. I just, you know, wanted to, you know, I, I was asking, how is this, uh, how does this tie up with the most recent thoroughfare plan that, uh, the county has done? And the, uh, NetCog, uh, information that's out there today, text dot information, uh, that's there? Because we have, as you saw just a few minutes ago, on, we have, we have more maps and roads than we've ever had, I think, drawn out as to what's happening now, what's happening down the future. Just trying to make sure that those come together. Same way with the, uh, the traffic volume and the roadway projections. NetCog does, does a job. I know that you used a lot of their data in here. That's on page, uh, 76. And just make sure that, uh, no, make sure, uh, you just, you know, comment on is, you know, I've looked at, I've looked at it and we're, we're at 5% growth. NetCog's at 4.8 and, uh, text dots at 5.12, whatever, whatever it is. So we, we're in the ballpark. And I feel like you are, I've checked some of these against, uh, NetCog.
I, I might just add that on page 74, the, the 2024 traffic counts, uh, came into the area district two weeks ago. So there's some numbers there, maybe we could add another column to include 2024. And, uh, this, this idea that we're have a road diet on, on Morgan Street is, uh, not an accurate estimate. We probably need to figure out a different way to make those improvements besides cutting down the traffic or the one-lane road. For instance, today, uh, at 3:15, I came to town from a long trip and I got to the Comet Cleaners, had stopped at the light. My tell, my pickup was kind of blocking people from being able to turn left because I was, my wife was driving, she was a little anxious to get through the intersection. And I said, "You, you do realize here, you're going to sit through this light three times, uh, to get through the 144 interchange." And that's exactly what it took. And it's, it's two, it's four lanes wide road and that's what, that's the stacking that occurs. So, uh, and then the, the Virgic Diamond is designed for four-lane road, divided four-lane road to approach it and go through it. So that, that road diet probably needs to be nixed. And I would like to see the, the most recent traffic column for the 2024.
We can look at that. And we did take out the, the two-lane with the, with the lane in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the two-lane option. We, the, the four-lane option with kind of the enhanced pedestrian sidewalks. Those are the first two options.
I agree with pedestrian enhancements need to occur, yeah.
And I found it tremendously interesting, the, starting on page 95, actually before that, but the housing sections, uh, where 95, you talk about the small lot, detached housing, missing middle market, missing middle housing. And tie that very well with the, uh, uh, housing cost of burden, which is, uh, how much, what's our annual income versus, uh, what is the average price of the housing? And I looked at the average, uh, the mean and the median housing much earlier in here. And I, I felt it was a little low, but I didn't, I didn't have the numbers to go and calculate it exactly either. In fact, I felt like it's about a hundred thousand dollar low on 289 to 300,000 dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's not our median price. But we've got a great resource that you could tap through the Granbury Realtors Association. And they do a monthly inventory chart for the whole county. But somebody over there could probably help you with identifying what's in the city. But, uh, uh, I, I would like on that page that he's just mentioning, on page 94, it says more of the missing middle. Can we define what the missing middle is? You know, we've got lots of apartments. We've got, uh, uh, you know, Granbury Housing Authority has for low cost. We have, uh, multiple tax credit projects in our town that through the years have been developed. I'm not sure if we're going to start diving into, we need more affordable housing. I think we need to address what kind of affordable housing do we have already? And I don't think that's covered anywhere really. It's just broken down by rental or, or ownership. And there are houses, I know a gentleman that's paying $3,000 a month rent for a very nice house in Harbor Lake subdivision. So that's a rental too. There's a whole neighborhood that was being developed that the HOA changed because they were, a foreign investment company was buying every one of them to turn them into rentals. And they were four and 500,000 dollar homes. And so, um, so rental doesn't mean affordable. So I, I would like to get deeper into the weeds on that. But, um, again, I could probably talk to you till tomorrow morning on all this stuff, but we probably need to have a teams meeting. But.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It is highlights I wanted to emphasize some more. So, uh, "The largest age demographic falls within 25 to 34 age bracket, highlighting a need for housing options suitable for young professionals and families." Okay. I think that's in conflict with what it says somewhere else about senior citizens being the largest age bracket. So, uh, anyway, need to look at all that.
Okay.
And here's the thing with our houses, uh, more expensive in Granbury than Godly. I can see that. I've got employees that have bought and built a brand-new house in Godly that commute to work here because it is a hundred dollars a foot cheaper to build in Godly than it is here, according to what he told me he paid for his house. And so, uh, why is that? We, we as a city council need to address that. Why is that? It's because, uh, impact fees, uh, building permit fees, uh, all those things that were required by law to do. And maybe that little town of Godly's not doing it, you know? Some of those things go on. The cost of paving, our concrete roads compared to asphalt or, or even some other kind of improved street that they have in Godly. So those are some things to consider when we're talking about this missing middle is. And then we come up with the tiny house statement somewhere that just blocked me down.
Previous page.
Yeah. Chris, I also wondered on that page, that same page 94, if the, the, the first paragraph in the residential real estate, if that was an accurate number for the number of residential permits per month by the city? So I, I circled that, so I didn't, I didn't, it's 45. It says 45 residential permits per month.
Yeah, that may be per month. But one year, one of these charts in here for 2023 had zero houses built. And so I think that Kira has communicated with them to work on that. And, and that data was probably hard to access because of the cyber outage and the transfer of the data from the old system that we were using for the permitting system to the new system. So I think that we can get that information if it hasn't already been gathered yet.
I hope you're getting the, uh, uh, just the point that, uh, this is a very valuable piece of property for us and we are, we're going to be using it. So the accuracy and the, you know, the breadth of information that you bring to it is, this is going to be used. No question about it.
So for instance, uh, the, the plantation subdivision within Harbor Lakes, uh, was completed by the end of 2021, early 2022. And that's 111 houses, something like that in that subdivision. And, uh, it doesn't show up in here on a curve, you know? There's a lot that's been built within the city, the Saratoga, the, uh, plantation subdivision within Harbor Lakes. Finishing up Harbor Lakes completely is another thing that's happened, so, uh, since 2019. So there's a, we just need to get you the real information to update that probably. Help you with it.
I know we've received some permit information. We still need to probably populate that within, uh, within the draft.
So on page 63, or 93, I'm sorry. So our current, when you say, the bottom bullet on page 93 says, "Need single-family residential development, that is not on large lots." What do we call a large lot? 7,000 square feet?
The only place we really define it is under the estate residential land use description, which really envisions one-acre lots. Uh, it's a fairly limited portion of the city. This was a comment taken from public input.
Yeah.
So it's inherently subjective. The only place we really define it would be acre, acreage lots.
The lady that was building a tiny, I mean, a accessory dwelling unit tonight that was approved is on a R4 lot, which is 4,000 square feet.
50 by 110, yeah.
Or 4,500, I don't know, it was small. But we are going to have to deal with legislature. And that concerns me that our plan is kind of stuck. I mean, we can adopt something, then we're going to come back and change it if they change all the rules on us. But I've got Granbury's Greatest Issues conflicting with what types of houses does Granbury need more of? And then other comments. It just seems to be a conflicting circular conversation.
Bottom conversations.
Yeah, we receive mixed feedback. So, yeah, um, I'm not sure how valuable we can, we, we need something more concrete and, and less subjective, I guess. But it's, it is what you heard, so.
Yes, it is.
Take that, I guess that's what we should really highlight is what, what we heard, not what we actually have. So, um, we've got a lot of patio homes, uh, in our community, a lot of condos. We got more coming by the hundreds. And if you don't have that information, we can get it to you from planning department. Whole patio home with, over here off of Moore Street with 69 patio homes, you know? So what they need more of is they got coming. It's just how quick can we get it built for them, I guess?
And at what price?
And at what price? That's the problem.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, did you have more?
I had the same thing. Granbury's greatest issue is too many new houses on small lots. And then you go to what type of housing does Granbury need more of? And the first bullet is small lot, single-family residential.
Starter homes.
Yeah. You know, and I understand that this is the community input that you're, you're just putting down.
Out of the 195 people that actually commented, yeah.
I, I think, I just think, you know, this is something that the council uses in order to drive our decisions in the future. I wish we had more public engagement in this to help city council make more. You can only make, uh, the best decision on the information that's provided to you at this time. And, and we're relying on the public to participate in that. And, and our decisions may be skewed because of this, this information.
One, one other thought I should think about with the housing is on page 98, where those third paragraph, um, we're talking about in the city limits and ETJ. So the ETJ is assumed as a subject for us because we have no control over that whatsoever. And, uh, in fact, people are petitioning the city weekly to be disannexed from the ETJ whenever we don't even exercise any control over them. So that's how, uh, uh, how much friction we have with our ETJ citizens. So when we talk about comparing what we have in Oak Trail Shores, which is in the ETJ, which will never be annexed by the city, um, housing stock and what have you, we would like for us to just talk about what's in the city instead of what's in the ETJ because we will never annex anything unless they change the law to allow us, um, anything besides what's in the city now. What we just completed in January. Those areas have been annexed now, so they need to be on the map as annexed. As we move forward in 2025, what we adopt, we want it to be current as possible. But when we start talking about Oak Trail Shores, which is probably the lowest, uh, oldest, lowest-income, oldest subdivision for the most part, unless it's on the lakeside, we're dealing with, we're dealing with, uh, a lot of rent property out there and a lot of ultra-low income folks. And one county commissioner, and just threw that in for fun. He's got a house there anyway. And, uh, we don't need to be worrying about what's going on over here at Spanish Trail or in Comanche Harbor, Comanche Cove, if it's not in the city limit. So, um, it's unfortunate. But we, we used to could plan for the ETJ to be part of the city someday and we can't do that anymore. So our planning document needs to recognize that, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
That'll change our numbers?
Change, change everything.
Can I clarify? Should, should that also include the, the future land use map? Which does show some areas in the ETJ, they're mostly low-density residential, but we've kept some of the commercial.
Yeah. We have no control whatsoever. So I don't know if we need to have that in there or not. If we get anything, it's going to be by some kind of a development agreement.
Right.
Where we're incentivizing the dog out of it. And, and then we would have control over that agreement. So I'm not sure we need to address it in the ETJ. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, I was going to say, it, a lot of things that are, that will be developed in the ETJ, they want to be in the city at the time they develop, when you, when we do the things like you're talking about. And so we might on the future land use map, want to include that. You know, what we want to, so, so if someone comes and says, "We'd like to do this project and be part of the city", we could at least see if it's in compliance with kind of what we, what we forecasted right now anyway. That doesn't mean we couldn't change it. But, but I think on the future land use map, I'd like to see it included.
And in, in the case of those annexation agreements, you would be applying zoning once they're, they're annexed, so.
Or they develop it and then be annexed.
Right.
We would have to probably change the zoning at that point when we annex it, if it's contrary to our land use plan.
Or establish zoning, yeah.
So what's in the county is in the county, what's in the city is in the city. See the conundrum? Like I've got one developer, uh, talking to us about putting in a subdivision and we were talking R7. And then he sends me an email and I was wanting something smaller than that, you know? And, uh, I don't think there's going to be an appetite to subsidize that for that. But we'll see, you know, I just don't know.
Good work. We're going to continue working with you on this. Because like I said, it's going to be, this, this is a document that gets used appropriately, so. Yes, Mr. Corrigan?
Really just one, one comment to, so, most of the, the things that I had questions on were, were pointed out. But, um, to avoid some of the areas that seem to be conflicting, if there's a way to go back into the comments and when we're prioritizing things from the comments to only use maybe the higher percentage. So, I mean, you know, there's what, 100 and?
195.
195.
People attended.
So I'd say, you know, call it 40%, right, right below half. So not that the, the single one-offs aren't important and, and we want to hear their opinions, but that one comment doesn't delineate towards the needs for the entire. but that one comment doesn't delineate towards the needs for the entire community.
Right.
So using a, a higher percentage, when we're making those bullet points, maybe we'll avoid some of the conflicting information.
Yeah, I'd say we can rework that section to give more gravity to the comments we heard more often, we can, we can do that.
Other than that, good job.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you David coming over and like I say, I'd like to have this team's meeting with you maybe next week or something, we'll set that up.
Happy to.
Appreciate your time, sorry you had to wait an hour and a half to get on this part of the agenda.
That's great. I really enjoyed the ADU discussion, because yeah, I've been following those bills from Hughes and Bassett as well, so it'll be interesting to see where that goes.
Yeah.
Well, if you like that, you're welcome back next, next time.
Hey, I'll be here.
We always have interesting and sometimes engaging conversations, so.
No, happy to be here, thank you for your feedback.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks David.
And no more? Okay. There was no action required on that item?
If there's something that y'all want me to address with him when I have my teams meeting, just send me an email or something and I'll, I'll certainly address that for you too. This meeting could literally last till midnight if we weren't careful, so. Thank goodness you don't have to worry about the Crescent train anymore.
That's true, that bypass is, is amazing, although it takes four to get home, so.
Okay.
I'll do the zigzag thing through the countryside.
Don't hit a deer or a hog.
Done that before, don't want to do it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number eight, citizen comments on matters. As Walker says, there's no one that signed up, so we will move to number nine. I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, all members are present. City council go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following. 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplating litigation. 551072, deliberation regarding real property. 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now into closed session. And I declare that we were in, we were in executive session, we were exited executive session, we are now in open session, there was no business handled in the executive session, council, do we have other business today? Any other business? There being no other business, the meeting is closed.